...for about five years as well. I received my bachelor's degree from Brigham Young University in Idaho in business management with a double minor in graphic design and marketing. In 2007, I was elected as the HOA president for my neighborhood, the Point Meadows Townhomes that's near Thanksgiving Point. And currently, I volunteer my time as the Relief Society President for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for the Holbrook Farms First Ward.
My name is Jason Oviot. I've lived in Lehigh for just shy of eighteen years. I have five sons, a beautiful wife Kim is from Highland. I grew up in Utah County. I've been a volunteer coach here in Lehigh for the last eighteen years. Spent the last five years coaching at the high school, both football and baseball. And the reason I'm running is because I just love this city. I know that we're growing into the future and just hope that I can have the opportunity to help us grow the right way and grow our communities as fast as our city grows and give us something to look forward to and give our kids a good future to live here as well. So, thank you.
Mike Southwick. I've lived in Lehigh all my life. I've been serving on the council for the last few years. I've enjoyed serving on the council and enjoyed serving the citizens of Lehigh. I love Lehigh. I have the impression that I've lived here all my life. Southwick, he's going, he can't hear you. And have a passion for the things of Lehigh and especially for the things that made Lehigh what it is, keep those traditions alive. And that's what I work hard to try to do. Thank you.
My name is Steve Warner. I grew up in Salt Lake City in Sugar House, but I spent most of my adult life living around the west in Phoenix, Arizona and Seattle. I work in tech. I'm a software engineer and a web developer. And I'm seeing a lot of the things that I saw in Seattle happening here in a bad way. And that's why I'm running for office now. I enjoy long walks on the beach and playing the banjo.
Hey there. I'm Montana Hamilton. I'm a Travers Mountain resident. I've been in Lehigh since 2012 and in Utah since 2006. Moved to Utah because the economy was booming at a great time. It's been a great place for me and my family to grow up in. And ever since we bought our first home, I've taken it as a responsibility to be involved in the HOAs that we've lived in. Like the responsibility for us to be involved in our government to help keep it running well. To that point, I was president of our HOA in Pleasant Grove for over seven years and helped them build it fiber optic internet infrastructure, which worked out great for them. And I hope to also help push that here in Lehigh. Yeah, that's me.
Just a reminder to hold the microphone close.
My name is Johnny Revel. Does that love him? Johnny Revel. I grew up here in Lehigh. My family moved here when I was about a year and a half old. And I've bled purple my whole life. No offense to the sky灰, I love orange too. I'm getting used to it, but it's different. I married, this is something I'm proud of. I married a girl from American Fork and she lives in Lehigh and she wears purple. So, until we play American Fork and they usually beat us. Anyway, but we have five wonderful children. They're all down in Lake Powell right now. I'll leave in the morning and go with them again. But I love Lehigh. Everybody up here probably loves Lehigh. There's no doubt. I think back of Lehigh when it was just a couple of states with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And now it's many more and a lot of people. And it's great. I love it. I'm happy to have served and I want to just keep continuing to serve on the city council. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paige Ulbrich. I've lived in Lehigh for seventeen years. I moved around a whole lot when I was growing up. My father was in the military and I went to six schools before I was in seventh grade. And the one thing that I always wanted to find was a hometown for my own children where they could put down roots and contribute to the community and feel like they belonged. And the first time we went to Roundup, we saw the parade, we sat in the gutter. I had taken my kids down the little trailer. Somebody passed us a little American flag and I knew that we had found the place where we belong and that we would want to raise our children. I have three sons. I'm a special education teacher out in Saratoga at the special education school. And I'd just like to thank the Lehigh Free Press. I'd like to thank all of you who have come out and taken the time to be informed voters and also all the people who are tuning in online. I think we're gonna have a great evening and a great debate. Thank you.
My name is Matt Hemmert. If you're mad at me or if I'm in trouble, call me Matthew. So, when we, my wife and I looked at moving back to Utah from Oregon from law school, we settled on a few places. And then we looked at one home in Lehigh and we said, this is gonna be our home. It's the only home that my children and my wife and I have known. My oldest son is twelve years old. And we love this city. We love the schools. And we want to stay here. And I've always looked for ways to serve this city. And in 2014, in March 2014, Mayor Burt Wilson appointed me to the planning commission. I didn't know what I was getting into, but at the same time, it was a wonderful experience for me and I've learned how the wheels of government work, whether that's development code or municipal code. And I was reappointed by Mayor Johnson in December. And what I do really quickly, I am a software licensing attorney, but now I'm the director of legal affairs for another software company. And I've been doing that for about eleven, twelve years.
My name's Michelle Miles and I'm a mother to seven children. They range in age from three to twenty-one years old. And we, I grew up on a farm in Idaho and then we moved to Pennsylvania. And from Pennsylvania, we moved to Lehigh. And like I said, we've been here for fourteen years. And I like Matt. And when I was driving around Utah County, we lived in a variety of locations because of my husband's job. And we came and saw the home. In fact, Matt and I are in the same ward, so it's a great place. And I knew that that's where we wanted to live. And I have the ability to marry the old with the new. So, I grew up on a farm, like I said, but I'm a creator of Android and iOS devices currently. I love this city and I want to serve the best that I can.
I'm Cody Black. And I grew up here. I'm thirty-eight years old. I've got a business that I started in 2001 that I still currently run. And I'm running for city council because I believe it's time to have a new face on the city council and present a new perspective. And I believe it's part of service to our community that more than, you know, by people should take a part of and contribute and share our ideas to help our city be a better place.
I'm Tony Hamilton. I've lived in Lehigh for six years. I have been an attorney for eleven years specializing in commercial and real estate litigation as well as family law. So, don't ask me any family law questions. But I, my husband and I own a small car dealership on Main Street. We have four kids. We've dealt with a few of the issues with planning commission and with city council over the past few years. Overall, I think we've been pretty happy to be here. We enjoy living here. But I agree with Cody. I think that it would be good to get a new perspective on the city council and some new ideas. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So, what we're gonna do to help speed up the discussion is we're gonna actually ask seven of, or six of you, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, six of you to just step out into the hall. We're gonna start with the first six so that we can go through the questions quickly. Johnny, I'm down. And before you go though, I just want to point out that we do have actually a couple of other elected officials in addition to Paige and Johnny and Mike, all who currently serve on the city council. We also have Chris Conde from the city council and Paul Hancock from the city council. So, thank you. If you all step out, then we will get through this first section really quick and then we'll invite you back in. We thought that this was a better format because with twelve to fourteen people here tonight, we would be going a very long time. So, we wanted to keep things moving, moving quickly. And we felt like this was the best way to do it. So, we appreciate your willingness to step out. And with that, I will turn the time back over to Mr. Southwick. Oh, and one last thing, sorry. We want to thank Willow Creek Middle School. Basically, John brought that to us first tonight to help us raise this state.
Okay, for this first question, I'm going to go from left to right, starting with, can you say your last name, pardon?
Knights.
Knights. We'll start with you for this time tonight. And according to recent Lehigh city surveys, the primary concerns of recent residents are traffic and growth and development. How would you address these concerns differently than they are being addressed now? You have two minutes.
Well, I have five points on this. I believe we need more lighting in certain areas to avoid collisions because after all, collisions do slow traffic, cause a lot of other problems as well. For example, South 500 West and Pioneer Crossing needs a strong light. Doesn't have one. 145 Pioneer Crossing is the only direct east-west road between the Pithin and Eagle Mountain Saratoga Springs.
Can we scan?
145 Pioneer Crossing is the only direct east-west road to Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs. Now, I take that road all the time and a lot of you probably do as well. And we know it's very, very backed up. So, that adds, so something needs to be done about that, but I believe it's a county road. We need to also evaluate meter traffic at some of the traffic circles. And we also need to change our lights to smart lights. For example, Mill Pond Road and Pioneer Crossing, it's about a five-second light. So, the third car to go through goes through a yellow all the time. And for example, if we have right-hand turns on some of the roads, we could actually put a yellow arrow there rather than a turn signal and that would help as well. And finally, I would like to mention that I'd like to pursue a relationship with the USPS and see if we can do something about getting a new post office in Eagle Mountain, Saratoga Springs because that does add a lot of traffic down home.
All right. So, my number one stance that I'm gonna be pressing very hard for is if elected, is I want to place a cap on high density housing. Now, over the past two months, as I've met with residents during my meet and greets that I've had scheduled...
Can you tell us their names? Because we can't see them.
Oh, I know this. Katie Corrista. So, I want to place a cap on high density housing. Now, as I've attended meet and greets around the city, one pressing question that people have asked is, if a cap is placed, where will low-income families be able to find affordable housing in Lehigh? Now, first and foremost, I've been in the appraisal business for going on five years now. City council has absolutely no control over the market value for any given city. It's just a product of the market. Second, $250,000 to $300,000 for a condo is not by any means considered low income or even affordable. And that's where the prices are in Lehigh right now. It's something the market, the way the market is flowing. Pushing dollars and cents aside, when I talk about high density housing, I'm not just talking about condos and townhomes. I'm talking about when a developer comes in, purchases an acre of land and tells the city that they want to put houses on it. The city says, well, you can probably accommodate four to maybe five homes on this. But the developers come in and saying, I want to put twelve and I'm gonna show you how I can creatively put twelve on it. That is high density. A cap is necessary because our current infrastructure cannot accommodate the mass influx of people and businesses that are moving into Lehigh right now. The number one complaint that is currently associated with Lehigh is the lack of parking and the traffic. UDOT is responsible for the creation and development of the Mountain View Corridor Highway that is built off of 2100. This is gonna connect Lehigh to Saratoga Springs and to Eagle Mountain and other various cities. Once that highway is built, a lot of the congestion will be alleviated from Lehigh. However, two years ago, there were signs posted along 2100 that stated the highway would be built after the fall of 2019. Here we are, it's still not completed. That is out of the control of Lehigh's hands and rightfully so. Lehigh shouldn't be waiting on things that are out of their control. Instead, they should focus on things that are under control and cap in high density is very much so one of those things. Saratoga and various neighborhoods are voting on that as well. And so, I think that we can follow that as well.
Jason Oviot. Sorry, that was a little bit loud. I got a voice. But traffic is a big concern. I think that a lot of people that I've talked to and that we've discussed things with, I talk about infrastructure. A lot of things that, as a council member now, these are things that we're voting on before that are falling. And I see one of the biggest concerns is we become reactive cities instead of a proactive. I think overbuilding a road is better than underbuilding. One of the prime examples is trying to be Thanksgiving Point. We have all those businesses there. You have one road to the east and one road to the south and that's it. You have two lanes. So, I think planning ahead to alleviate that, maybe overpasses over 2100, something like that, where you can work on the traffic program, the traffic problems as well. Another thing, the housing is a big problem. The high-density housing. You go from a subdivision where you could put seventy-five, eighty homes and you put in three hundred townhome units, condos, apartments. Yeah, that's great because you get more water bills, more power bills, but you're gonna run out of water and you're gonna create a congested area where you cannot really travel through because of all the people needing to get to their homes. Because a lot of people, you know, wonder when you talk about an overpass. I work in West Valley. I watched as the state did an amazing job with Banger Highway. And during the working progress, made it so you could get, they increased the traffic flow pattern there. And I think with the growth of our city, we need to look somewhere that to alleviate the congestion, especially down Main Street. And I just hope that we can work together with the planning commission to not only work on our traffic, but also to help with the housing market. We don't, like Katie says, we don't control the prices, but we can work on how many homes can be built in certain areas through zoning and planning commission. Thank you.
Mike Southwick. It is, we have a lot of traffic. We have a lot of congestion in different places. But it's because of the growth that's happened in the last twenty years, basically. And I've lived here all my life and I've seen it both ways. But it can be managed. It can be managed. But the things that we need to do, we continue to seek out property for fire, for EMS because of the development in different parts of the city. We need to work as a city and staff in different areas of the town with traffic to alleviate some of the problems. Some of those are, we have with traffic in different parts. Some are okay in the other areas, but we need to look at those with city and in a timely manner to fix some of those. And that is happening. We need to work with surrounding cities and also, because a lot of their traffic is coming through our city to get to other places, to their back to work and the back home. So, they're happy to come through Lehigh to get to their city. So, we need to work with those cities to come up with different ways. Just as the Vineyard Connector, they're working on that out to the south to alleviate some of the traffic in some other areas that are being looked at with the Mountain Land Agency, MAC. Stronger effort, I believe, is to put and place transit-oriented developments near track stations that are going to be coming through because that's going to be eliminating traffic because they're going to be using the tracks and being able to walk to that point. There's a lot of the younger generation that actually don't want a bigger home to take care of in an area like that where they can be able to go and use the transit to get back and forth and that will eliminate traffic. So, there has been a lot of growth and all of us don't want that every time we go out. But with the growth, that kind of comes with it. Thank you.
Steve Warner. I think we've had too much growth, too fast, and it's time to slow it down, put the brakes on and catch up. It could take us ten or twenty years if things really slow down and just catch up with what's already happened. My biggest concern by far is high-density housing. The term affordable housing is used by politicians both in Utah and other states to refer to high-density units such as apartments and condos. Not only do these units not make housing more affordable, but they make it more expensive. Consider cities that are famous for population density. New York, San Francisco, Seattle, these are the most expensive cities in the country. The truth is, these high-density projects are intended to swell the population of a given area and are directly tied to the liberal immigration agenda. Utah and western US states are currently undergoing an engineered population explosion and a parallel boom in tech corporations and technical infrastructure. The end result of this will be a massive super metropolis all along the I-15 corridor and similar mega cities are being built all over the country. Do you want Utah to turn into California?
Montana Hamilton again. So, ultimately, as a leader of a city or any kind of government, we represent the residents. I don't have time to go to every planning commission meeting or every city council meeting. So, I need a representative sitting at the table that's gonna represent me and the city. He's gonna listen to both sides of the issue. He's gonna look at the legalities of the issues and make a decision that's right for our city. Now, that might not be one that I even agree with at times, but it's what we need. We need leaders that are willing to listen and do the right thing for the facts that are given. To that point, I think the current city council has done a pretty good job. But I think in particular, to the actions taken in Travers Mountain as to the mass grading and mining, where rights were given that the developer did not have to add nuisance and dust and sound pollution, et cetera, to those residents that are literally right next to it. I don't think that was a wise decision. I don't think the public, I don't think the city of Lehigh gained enough from that to justify those actions. So, ultimately, I want leaders on the city council that are willing to do the right thing for all the residents, not just particular residents. I think in that respect, your enjoyment, your safety, your health is just as valuable as the rights to develop one's land. And we have to balance both of those things. And that's why I'm running, to be that person that can hopefully balance those concerns.
Thank you. I'm sorry I gave you two minutes and we can only have one from now on. I'm sorry about that.
Don't let the other guys know.
Right. This time, we're gonna start with Mr. Southwick. Mike? We'll start with you and we'll go again to the left and then come back to Mr. Knights. This next question is, describe any public service in which you have been involved.
As I mentioned before, I've been serving in the council for the last few years and I have enjoyed that. I'm a board member for the Hutchins Museum. I've worked closely with the Lehigh Historical Society and Archives as well as the Lehigh Historical Preservation Committee. I was also a volunteer fireman for the city for twenty-five years. And I'm currently serving as vice president of the Lehigh Civic Improvement Association, the Lehigh Roundup, and have been a director for sixteen years. Those are some of the things that I've loved. My dad always taught and my mother taught us that if we're going to live in a city, you serve within that city and try to do the things that you can to make that city great.
No local, no service to speak of, so I won't stand up. Thank you.
So, again, all of my public service has been in HOAs. Everybody loves to hate HOAs, but we love to hate government too. So, I guess it works out both ways. But the reality is, being involved in them is the best way to help make sure that they don't do what we don't want them to do. Right? So, my first home that I bought in Colorado, I joined the HOA board. When I moved to Pleasant Grove and bought a home, we were part of that HOA board. And I'm particularly proud of the service that I did there. It was hard to get onto that board as a newcomer, but I got on there. And one of the things that we pushed through wasn't, didn't make everybody happy to pay a $400 assessment, which was what I pushed. But we built our own fiber optic infrastructure. And because of that, those residents still to this day are paying $18 a month for internet because we controlled it. And I think that that kind of leadership is what I bring and I'd like to bring that to the city council.
Henry Knights. National Guard, Valley View Kids Camp, Mission District in Los Angeles, feeding the homeless, donations to food pantries and women's shelters, good news clubs, giving time to children in public housing activities, games and so forth. All service was unpaid and it was volunteer. I haven't served at any council or anything like that. But I always volunteer to help out. The reason I'm running is because I want to serve in Lehigh. I feel that people need a voice and they also need to be heard. Thank you.
Hi, so in 2017, I was elected, as I said before, as the HOA president for our townhomes at the time of Point Meadows, which is just right across from Thanksgiving Point. And while in that position, I was able to take a negative budget and flip it into a positive cash flow and help residents make much-needed repairs to exterior their homes. And then still while cultivating the savings account for the HOA, which I'm really proud of because that took a lot of work, you guys. When a major hiccup occurred for my townhomes in which eight of the units basements flooded with sewage, I worked relentlessly with the city as well as various insurance companies to hold someone accountable. So, that way, the families can receive compensation for the horrendous damages that were done. Currently, I volunteer my time, as I said, as the Relief Society President for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Holbrook Farms First Ward. In the last ten months, we've undergone two ward splits and one state split. And at one point in time, we were the fastest-growing ward in the world with our membership exceeding over a thousand members.
Jason Oviot again. So, I have served as a volunteer coach in the youth sports program in Lehigh for the last eighteen years. I've coached football, baseball, junior jazz. Volunteer my time with the high school, coaching football and baseball for the last two years. I have served in various ward columns with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, both as a scout master in a few wards. And I also served in the young single adult state here in Lehigh as a council commissioner for three years. I look forward to serving as much as I can. My wife and I have been on parade committee votes in Lehigh for the junior parade for Roundup Week. And it's just, I love serving. I love serving the youth a lot. I love helping young men, young women achieve their potential through hard work and dedication and focusing on a goal and achieving that goal. So, that's one thing I want to bring, is that same determination to help us grow forward.
We'll start with Mr. Hamilton. So, this one, and pass to the right this time. This next question is, residents are also concerned about the lack of parks, open green space and the lack of a large performing arts facility in Lehigh. In your view, does a city have a responsibility to provide these amenities to its citizens? If you agree these amenities are in short supply, how would you suggest funding them?
So, my personal opinion is, it's not a responsibility of the city. But if the city residents think that that's something that they value, then we should provide them because that's what we want. So, but when it comes to parks, we want more parks. How are we gonna pay for them? And I think that the tough decision that we have to make is, are we willing to pay for them? Either that's through bonding or, which I would prefer, is that we should be paying higher taxes if we want to pay for those things because we have to maintain them long-term as well. It's not going to be enough to just say that they're gonna happen magically. We have to pay them. And in running an HOA, that was important. Like Katie comes, having reserves is important. Saving for the future is important. So, if we want those parks or we want these facilities, we have to pay for them and I'd rather not go into debt for that.
In general, I am a fiscal conservative. I definitely don't think we should be going into debt to pay for parks or any type of luxury. If people really want that sort of thing and there's a budget surplus and the people demand it, that's great. I do think, especially with parks, those could be largely built with volunteer work, volunteer donations of resources and money. Yeah, that's better.
And I guess I do feel that it is a responsibility of the city for parks with the performing arts. I don't know that that's a responsibility, but I feel like it's something that we need to work towards to do. We have about 23 full-size parks and many smaller open spaces here in Lehigh at the present that we as citizens can enjoy. I definitely think that we're in short supply of recreational facilities, and we need to do something there. As was mentioned, there was a park bond, a RAP tax, but the citizens did not want that. So we do need to come up with some other ways. I feel like that can be done with volunteerism, can be done maybe with a committee that looks for ways for funding, possibly through corporate donations and seeking out possible grants that we could do, matching grants with the city to provide those opportunities. Thank you.
I could say ditto, but I won't because that's not right. But I do agree with Mike on some things. I think the city has a responsibility for green space and parks, but I think there's ways we can do it. My first home I built only, I was in the Chapel Valley subdivision. And Patterson Construction built a one-acre park in the middle of that for the city. And I think that's something we can do, is have these developers, if they come in, share the cost of putting a green space park in for the residents of Lehigh to use. Another thing I look at, I do think that we can get corporate sponsorship to help with some of these facilities. Endowments and grants are big. As far as the art center goes, I would love to see a community art center that holds more than 100 people. We are a very artistic community, and I love the arts. I love plays, I love music, I love art classes, things like that. I think we should give something like that for our kids. And I think one of the biggest things that, in closing, is I just think that we have a responsibility to provide the best opportunity for the youth and for families to enjoy this beautiful city. And parks, open green spaces, flashpads, I think are a great opportunity. I would love a big regional park in Lehigh as well.
I agree that we need to be physically responsible with the way that we're handling our funds. And I appreciate the work that Mark Johnson's doing with that. He's very tight with money, and I really admire that. I want to point out really quickly that Lehigh is bleeding. Our infrastructure right now cannot contain the influx of people that are moving in and out of Lehigh right now. So our number-one priority, instead of focusing on parks and recreation, which are huge, is we need to make sure that our priorities are on the infrastructure right now, whether it be parking streets, leading traffic, police and fire departments, and zoning. Once those things have been addressed, then we can take the fluff, which is parks and recreation, and the drug sales as well. We're on a very, very tight budget. If any of yous look over the budget for parks and recreations, it's very, very tight. I want to be able to move, I think that the, we have to be creative in the way that we do our parks and our recreation. The first one that comes to mind is the agreement with Arseneau right now. I thought it was a great agreement. It was definitely unfortunate that this place in the area has a lot of red tape and litigation wrapped around it. But I think we need to have creative options like that. We need to have builders come in to be able to work with the builders so that we can create that for the city. There's plenty of opportunities like that. An example is a bike trail that was built up in Traverse Mountain. The residents of Traverse Mountain, anti-parking, worked with their community to get their HOA and local businesses, like Adobe, to build that trail. And they built the trail according to what the residents wanted.
Henry Knights. Ignore the spelling. So for, these are quality of life issues, they're important. But for comparison, Orham has about 100,000 people. We have a little over 65, 60,000. Both have 250 acres of parks. We have 30, they have 20, we have a lot of miles of trails. So that is how I think about open spaces and parks, is quality of life. As far as performing arts, if we do determine that we need to do something, and it sounds like we do, and you usually do, do we get a large performing arts center? Or do we actually provide grants to the smaller venues for improvements? I used to be the president of the Elgin Community Theater, and I went to the state of Illinois and got a $5,000 grant, for example, for that group.
Thank you very much. I've got just two quick questions before we're going to actually switch out the panel. How long have you lived in Lehigh? This way to that way. How long have you lived in Lehigh?
One year.
One year?
Five years.
Five?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Almost 65.
Sixty-five?
1.5.
1.5? Excellent.
Seven years.
Seven years, okay. And in that time, how many city councils or planning commissions have you attended?
I haven't been to any yet.
Okay.
Is it online or actually?
Online counts. What, some of our city councilors do it that way too, so.
I'm a bit of a nerd. I think I've missed maybe three.
Missed three? Okay, thank you.
Probably 11.
11 is how many you've gone to?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, I've been to a lot.
Excellent.
I've been to two and maybe watched, read through the minutes or watched a dozen or so of the streams online.
Okay.
Yeah, I've only been to a few of the planning commission meetings and a lot of the city council would probably have done, or more like a dozen, mostly online though.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. Please stay around for people to be able to talk to you. And if you'll go out the doors and send the others in, and we're going to follow similar format. And while we are waiting for the transition, I just wanted to bring up some of the important dates you need to know about if you're going to vote. So the primary election date is on August 13th. If you're going to vote by mail, your ballot has to be mailed and postmarked August 12th. If you don't mail it August 12th, then you have to, or before then. August 12th or before then. You then have to take your ballot into the city and hand-deliver it to them in order to be able to cast your ballot, okay?
There's a box right across from City Hall.
There's a box right across from City Hall. And that, you can do that on the 13th, the day of the election. And then, as a last announcement, the general election will be held November 5th. And also, your mailing ballots have to be postmarked by November 4th or before. Thank you. And there is going to be a meet the candidates night this coming Tuesday at the Legacy Center. What time is that? 6 to 7:30-ish. Six o'clock. All right, welcome. We're going to give you each, introduce themselves or go straight to you. All right, we're just going to turn it over to this kid.
And say your name before we start.
Okay.
And stand up. And stand up.
Again, these are questions that the candidate, candidates have already received. And we're going to do two minutes for this first one, because I need two minutes for the last. We're going to be fair, but don't feel like you have to take one more two minutes. All right, question number one. According to recent Lehigh city surveys, the primary concerns of residents are traffic, growth, and development. How would you address these concerns differently than they are being addressed now? We're going to go from Paige, Johnny, and Oliver to.
I'd like to, first, I'm Paige Ulbrich. And this is a really important issue. All the Lehigh residents have put their finger on that. So I'm going to go back to a time when I actually addressed something like that. Some years ago, there was a hotel coming to Lehigh. And unfortunately, it was directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood. My very first month in office, we had to decide what to do about that. And the residents came in, and it was heartbreaking. And my heart went out to all the mothers who were afraid that people would be staring at their children in their backyards. But the truth is, it was zoned commercial. It was a permitted use. That time, I voted with my emotions, and I voted against that hotel. And eventually, it cost us, because there are things you might want to do, but according to the law, you can't do. Now, when we know better, we do better, right? So for the short term, what we did was, we got with the planning department, and we put together some new standards for when commercial is next to residential. We increased the landscape buffers, we had a bigger calver of trees put in, we made the buffer wider if the building was taller. That's what we could do in the short term. So what are we doing in the long term? My biggest budget priority for last year was to fund a new general plan. It's been many years since Lehigh has had one. Thirty percent of our residents have moved in since our last general plan update. That's incredible growth. And unless we look at that and update our general plan, then we are not doing it right. That was voted into our budget, it's in process now. The first resident meeting was in February, and I'm looking forward to eliminating some of these problems for the future.
Johnny Revel, I knew I should have gone before Paige, because you read my notes. No, I too voted against that, that item that day, and we learned a great lesson. As you all know, Lehigh's growing at an unprecedented rate. Not only that, but you combine that with two of our sister cities out west that are also growing even as fast or faster than we are. Their residents have to go from A to B, and unfortunately, we are like right in the middle. And so not only are we as a city having to deal with our growth, we're having to deal with their growth, and no funding to do it. I think our staff and our councils that we've had over the past few years have done a good job. Could it be better? Possibly. There could have been some things put in place before those cities were even incorporated as far as impact fees to help with regional transportation that work. What I will do and then continue to do is support legislation to have better traffic solutions. I will support making sure that we have the water resources that we have. I'll continue to support funding for our emergency services and make sure that we are, we feel safe in our community. And I will continue to work with the planning department, work with UDOT, work with all of those who, who help plan and make Lehigh what it is. It's a challenge, there's no doubt. But as we work together, we can make it happen. One of my biggest challenges and fears in Lehigh is the old Lehigh and the new Lehigh being able to come together. I feel that we have a responsibility as elected officials to try to, and especially myself, being in old Lehigh, but living in part of the new Lehigh, is the new Lehigh having a respect for the old Lehigh, and the old Lehigh having a respect and an understanding for new ideas from the new Lehigh. I think if, I worry about that contention and hope that we can mend that a little better. Thank you.
Cody Black. I'm going to start with the development with all these incentives that some of these big corporations are getting. I would absolutely not allow any incentives. That's my perspective, but Lehigh City's great, and we don't need to pay anybody to come here. In regards to development with the new homes coming in, I think that each development should pay its impact to the city. I'm just taking a different perspective on this. For instance, if they're going to require bigger water pumps and more equipment, or a fire department, for instance, I think that development should pay the impact to the city so the rest of the city isn't footing a bill. It seems like we're always playing catch-up, and so I want something that keeps that in balance. And in regards to the traffic, I think we keep hiring these traffic study people. And I don't know that we're getting what we're paying for, because if we have roads that are clogged, it's clear that we need another lane. So I think we need to have just some sort of math, you know, math number to... If there's so many houses in this development, we need so many lanes to get to there. That's what I think we should do.
Michelle Miles. And in regards to development, my thoughts are similar to Paige's as far as looking at the general plan and making sure that business complexes and high-density housing are positioned so that the infrastructure can support the mass amount of people that come to those types of situations. And development of housing, I would like to see Lehigh City remove the $4,500 impact fee so that it will create more affordable housing interspersed throughout the community. Currently, they have a second impact fee starting on, I believe, September 1st this year for anybody who's renting a mother-in-law apartment. And after doing some research, it seemed as though if people were allowed to rent their mother-in-law apartments for free, it would, well, they would charge rent. But rent it without the impact fee and be encouraged, it would intersperse the workforce throughout the community and decreasing concentration of citizens in one area and providing affordable housing. And as far as traffic, I think that out by the Thanksgiving Point area especially, it, traffic is very heavy during commuting times before work and after work around 5:30. And I would like to explore perhaps a shuttle service that could take people from those businesses during those key hours to mass transit or the parking rides.
Tommy Hamilton. My thoughts on growth and development. Lehigh obviously has been going, growing exponentially, and it is a great place to live. But one of the issues that I've noticed, and I think all of us have noticed, is that infrastructure seems to be on the back burner when development is on the table. I have gone through a fair amount of planning commission and city council meetings, and it seems like the city is very concerned with, let's bring businesses in, let's get these people in, let's get this revenue in. But then, when it comes to traffic, it's just kind of on the back burner. It's one of those things that is an afterthought. So, for instance, my husband and I own a car dealership on Main Street, and we had to do a traffic study. The traffic study came back and said you'll have five to six more vehicles of people turning in and out of the car dealership. That was it. That was the end of the traffic. And honestly, our car dealership is small, there won't be that much traffic. But when I look at these large 500,000-square-foot complexes that are coming in with tons of businesses, and then you see that there's nowhere for these people to get in and out of their, of their area. It would be important to say to developers, we want to improve this, but we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure to support all of the people that are coming in and out of these areas, whether it be commercial areas, residential areas, and other service areas. So if, for me, I think that infrastructure needs to be at the top of the list. How are these developers going to work with the city to get this done and make sure that we have enough room for all of these people to come and go from our city?
Again, Matt Hemmer. Right before I came to this, I was at a planning commission meeting where we were talking about an update for, they were giving us an update to our update to the general plan. And as Paige said, it's something that's very important to me, because this is basically the guideline for us to then develop out the rest of this, the rest of our city. With that in place, it helps inform us as to where we should be changing zoning, where we should be buffering residential from commercial. One of the things that I loved was when we introduced the neighborhood commercial zone. And this is going to be candid with the general plan as well. And that's meant to be a buffer between commercial and residential so that to lessen the impacts of commercial on our residents. As it relates to overall development, there's a problem in what we've been doing in America for a long time. It's called Leclidian zoning, where we separate all of these uses, where we think residential has to be over here, commercial has to be over here, other things have to be over there. What that has done is increase our dependency or make us totally dependent on our cars. One of the things that I was really, really happy to see is it came through the planning commission and with the help of the, of the city council as well. We worked on this for quite some time, as transit-oriented, transit-oriented districts. And there are overlays where we are using mixed use, where we have commercial, residential, all in the same place, where it's a walkable place. But it's also, they've also been overlaid in a place where we have, where UTA has aligned future track stations. So, and that's part of the development dovetail to the transportation issue. The more that we build that way, the better it's going to be for us on our roads. We obviously can't continue to build more roads, widen roads, and everything else. One of my other initiatives is to figure out a way to, to increase our, or somehow incent, alternative transportation. And we can't just wait on UTA to bring that to us.
So I currently am out at Central Spring as a reserve officer. When I went through the police academy, I was a volunteer for Lehigh Police Department. It's the FIBS program. So you just, they have several things that they're allowed to do. That's what I have.
As a council, and I've served for over 10 years on the North...
As a councilman, I've served for over 10 years on the North Point Special Service District. That's the waste transfer station down in Linden. Was on the board of directors there. Recently, I've been on the North Point, Pimpin' Oga Special Service District, which is the sewer treatment plant, also in Linden. I've served on the board of the Fox Hollow Golf Course. For those who don't know, Lehigh City and American Forest and Pleasant Grove all own, are partners in the golf course, used to be called Tri-City. And also, and also a member of the Lehigh Irrigation Company, which is separate from a city organization. It's its own irrigation company. I've also served, I'm, for those who don't know, I am the voice of the Lehigh sports programs. And so, I had to do all the basketball, football, baseball games. Also coached all my kids in all their sports from baseball, soccer, football, lacrosse ones, but it was too hard to understand.
We are really lucky in Lehigh because there are so many opportunities to serve. And I have definitely benefited from those and so has my family. I've been on the arts council for more than 10 years now. I think we're moving up on 11 or 12. I've had the opportunity through the city council to serve on the library board, the Parks, Trails and Trees Committee, the Jordan River Commission. I've been on the Board of Adjustments for a year. I served on the planning commission for three years. I was on the Lehigh Celebration Committee. I was in the parade department. I served on the Miss Lehigh Committee. I was co-director of the Miss Lehigh's Outstanding Team Pageant. And I've served on the board for PTAs and school community councils at three different schools. They always say that vocation is where your unique skillset meets someone else's unique need. And I've been really lucky in Lehigh to find out that there are lots of opportunities to benefit me and my family and the community.
I did not want to call on Paige. Paige is amazing. I have had the wonderful opportunity to serve on the planning commission for over five and a half years. And I'm not just gonna say that it's my opportunity, it was my family's opportunity too because as all of us know who have served in, on these, either as a city council member, planning commission member, whatever, it's a big toll on my family and everything. You know, adding up what that means over the years, if we're, as a planning commissioner to do it right, that's 1,500 to 2,000 hours of community service, of public service, that those of us who have long tenure on the planning commission do. And we do it happily. And I've done it and it's been rough, but I love it because I love this city.
Okay, I have served on the HOA board up in Traverse Mountain. I don't live there anymore, but I was on the board for about two and a half years up there. I've also done, I've also served as chairperson for a couple of school carnivals and other sorts of things in my children's school. And then I also, as an attorney, I try to do somewhere around 50 hours of pro bono legal work every year just to help others in the community. And I feel like this serving on the city council is a good way for us to just show how much we love our community and be involved and try to be a voice for all those people that are unable, you know, to serve themselves.
A few years ago, I joined a nonprofit and it was an educational cooperative which had 30 families and they met for a half a day a week. Shortly after joining, I was invited to be on the board and I put together a schedule and brought together volunteers and other families and educators to create a class, class offerings that were over 100 per year. And I created the cooperative to 350 families per year, basically with volunteer service. And then through that, through my efforts, then the board elected me to become the president of that cooperative. So I feel like I have a lot of experience in service, not only in nonprofit, but as well as my church.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Hemmer for this one and just go to your right. This last question is, residents are also concerned about the lack of parks, open green space, and the lack of a large performing arts facility in Lehigh. In your view, does the city have a responsibility to provide these amenities to its citizens? If you agree these amenities are in short supply, how would you suggest funding them?
Yeah, so we are underparked. And not, and that doesn't mean vehicles. If you look at NERVA standards, APA standards, et cetera, we don't have enough parks to service our community on a per capita basis. That's what they look at when they're determining what they're doing on a, as it relates to amenities and parks. I would be, I advocated strongly for the Parks Bond. I even came to the city council and advocated in front of the city council. That's how strongly I felt about that. But at the same time, I know the residents have spoken. And I would not be, as a city council member, I would not bring back another tax or a bond the same way. If there's another way to bring it back for another vote, because it seems like people want that, I would be, I would want that as well. And I do believe that a city does have a responsibility to provide certain amenities. Not everything, but certain amenities. And I wish I could have spoken to the Arts Building, but my time is up.
Okay, I do think the city has somewhat a responsibility to provide parks and green space. It's important to have parks and green space. Otherwise, all it is is streets, roads and houses and buildings. So, my thoughts are, the bond was voted down because in my opinion it was too ambiguous and was way too much money. But I would like to work with public-private ventures to see if we can get some green space built. I've already been in the process of working, of meeting with businesses and individuals to try to get some green space and parks. Working also with Cody Black on a model for Pet Park. And I think that's important. So I would like to first exhaust those community resources before going through a rap tax or a bond. But I think either of those could pass. And as for an amphitheater, my view is let's have an amphitheater like the London Sandy.
Okay, it is a known fact that nature and green space is good for people emotionally and physically. And working with what is, because I know that the community voted down the bond, I support Cody and Toni's efforts to improve parks and Pet's Park to do things such as what the mayor did, bringing Arsenal, and what Cody's doing, bringing baseball. And on a smaller scale, I talked to Steve Marchbanks and there's several retention, well, many retention basins in Lehigh that are small, that are about a fourth of an acre, maybe a little bit more, interspersed throughout the neighborhoods and the communities. And there's possibilities there to make community gardens with those because the water rights are already there as well as an ability to tap into the water. And I guess I'm done.
Okay, so parks. We need to establish parks or sports parks, if they're the same or if they're too separate. I think we keep going back and forth. Some people don't want sports parks, some people want leisure parks. I think we should come to an agreement on what parks are. I'll speak with the Pet Park. So we're in the process right now of getting a committee together. And we're gonna build a baseball field at Pet Park if we can get this approved through the city. It's gonna be great. It's all donations. We got a few people that have already pledged a lot of money and a couple others that are, you know, professionals that built these fields. And they're interested. So, I do think the city has a responsibility to pay for the parks. And I think the rap tax is kind of the only way, or a bond. I don't think there's anything in the budget that we can pay for any of these builds. So we have to do it off donation.
I obviously supported the bond. That would have helped improve all of our parks. We have nearly 30 parks and about 250 acres of park space in Lehigh. It would have improved all of those, plus build out the Rhodes Mellon or the Mellon Rhodes Park and the Pet Park as well. But that's okay, that's not what the citizens wants, we have to be creative. In fact, we've got right now an RFP out for a private-public venture with, we're hoping that some marketing companies come forth and help sell the marketing opportunities that they can find at these parks. Whether they name one of the fields after their business or have signage, whatever. But that's, I think that's the way we're going to be able to have some of these major parks like maybe Pet Park and Rhodes Mellon Park built. As far as the amphitheater, again, that's going to be a private-public venture. We've got a group in town that wanna build the Curtis Center. They're raising money currently right now and I'll support that.
There's been a lot of talk about the Parks Bond and I think it's a really great example of where Lehigh has listened to the citizens. You know, the question was, does the city have a responsibility to provide these amenities? I believe that more than that, the citizens have a responsibility to provide the amenities they want. If any of you have met my son James over here, he's 15. He's looking at some pretty fancy trucks for when he turns 16. I would like him to take over his brother's 99 Explorer. It's not fast or fancy, but it's functional. Well, if you want nice things, you have to pay for them. And if you want nice things, you have to work for them. James got a job and Lehigh citizens got to work. We have Traverse Mountain Trails Association that's found matching grants for five miles of trails. We have a group that's working on the Dry Creek Lake that's gonna provide us better flood control, irrigation, as well as recreational opportunities. I think that the bond would have provided fast and fancy. This isn't gonna be fast and fancy, but I think Lehigh can do functional.
All right, now, we've got a couple last questions before we're gonna invite everybody else back in. But real quick, how long have you lived in Lehigh?
17 years.
17. See my age, 44. 44, okay.
37.
37.
14.
Okay.
6.
Okay.
Almost 13.
All right. And in that time, how many city council meetings or planning commissions have you attended?
A lot.
Not as many as that, but more than I can count.
Probably, I'm counting, they're, too bad I have to count, but I would say about a dozen.
I've been to my chair, sure. Close to 20 years worth.
When I was on the planning commission, I also went to city council. So I've been to hundreds of meetings and I've spent hundreds of hours in the city council chambers getting ready for four years before I break promise.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you so much for attending tonight and letting our constituents understand who you are and what you are gonna strive to accomplish if you were to win election. Before we finish, I wanted to just give everybody one last chance, 30 seconds each, to just wrap up. Tell us why we should vote for you. In essence, tell us why you're the one that's gonna be able to best fill this position. 30 seconds, ready, go.
Like I've said already, I'm here to lead and be a representative of the residents. So ultimately, I wanna be able to be on the council and be there to listen to the residents, listen to the issues that come up, look at both sides of those issues and make good decisions that move the city forward in a way that protects the health, the safety and enjoyment of our city.
30 seconds?
Yeah.
Jason O'Ginn. I'm running because I love, I love Lehigh. Growing up in Orme, we didn't really, we used to make fun of Lehigh. Then I moved here and I can't think of a better place to live. And I wanna make that for generations to come. I also wanna be a voice of the people, for the people, by the people, if that makes sense. I just wanna be, listen to the concerns and then I want to be able to share that with the council and then help us, help us grow in the future.
Paige Dalbrecht. I mentioned before that I moved around a lot growing up and many, many times I watched my parents plant orchards and I never saw them eat the fruit because we would move on too quickly. I was raised with the idea that you have an obligation to make a place better for the people who come after you, for the people who live here now. And that's what I want to do, what I want to continue to do on city council. For everyone who lives in Lehigh now and for the ones who are gonna come in the future. We wanna eat that fruit.
Johnny Revelle. I've had the opportunity to work with close to a dozen different council members and mayors over the last 16 years. And one thing that I think is very important is the ability, because one council member has no power. Three of them do. You have influence and you can be a good influence and negotiate. However, it takes someone who is able to bond, someone who is able to take different opinions, different stances, and work together to accomplish. I feel like I've been able to do that and hope to continue.
Cody Black. I'm a business owner, you know, steals what you need for our city council, management, budgeting, marketing, building things with nothing, coming up with ideas that work. I think that's the qualities we need in someone on the city council. And I'm ready to get to work, I'm not afraid of it. Getting up this baseball nonprofit of the Pet Park. We're getting a lot of support and Toni's, you know, a lot of help to get that going and we gotta get to it, so watch out for that.
One of my greatest gifts is my ability to bring people together and to conceptualize and see things from the start to the finish and be able to communicate that to citizens through goals that they can achieve and help them get behind what the city needs to do. And so I feel like I can bring that aspect to the council.
Toni Hamilton. I think my background is an attorney and then also coupled with a mom of four kids makes me have a very good idea of how to balance my time. I, if anyone knows me, I love research and writing, which is why I became an attorney. So I will be one of the most prepared people on there, reading everything, reviewing everything. I'm happy to talk with people, I'm happy to get new ideas and perspectives. I really just want to hear from everyone and do what we can to make this a great city.
Matt Hemmer again. I've been pressure-tested in boardrooms, I've been pressure-tested in courtrooms, I've been pressure-tested in legislative hearing rooms. And I've been pressure-tested in my own family room. Most of all, pressure-tested on the planning commission. Half a decade of experience here and it's not just passion, it's passion plus experience. Passion's not enough in my book. It helps, but the combination of the two is what I bring.
Katie Quigisto. I have three littles at home and I'm raising them and I want to be able to make sure that their future is going to be as great of a future that I had growing up in a little, small town in Gardner, Kansas. I wanna make sure that the voices of Lehigh are heard. And from, one of the main reasons why I'm writing is because I feel like my voice wasn't heard for a long time and that my community and my neighborhood wasn't being heard. And so I wanna be able to be that person that's gonna be that voice for the citizens. My experience as an appraiser makes me qualified as well.
Henry Knights. Two big things on my list is a new post office and I have invested interest since my wife works at the Lehigh Post Office. She's overworked. And secondly, debt servicing. From my understanding, we pay a lot annually in interest. I think it's over a million. Someone slap me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Steve Order. We have seen where the current council wants to take this city. They want more people, more density, more traffic, more mining, more pollution, more growth, more, more, more. And I think it's time for less. More apartments, no problems. Time to slow it down.
Mike Southwick. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I've had to be able to serve with, as Johnny mentioned, like different individuals. It's great to work with the council members and the mayors that we present and previous. I am grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve you as citizens. And if you give me that opportunity, I will continue to serve and do the best that I can. Do I know everything? No. But as we do things together as citizens in the council, we can accomplish a lot and work together.
Thank you very much for all your participation tonight. Let's give them a nice go. So, as part of just our concluding remarks, first and foremost, I'm gonna encourage the candidates to, at the end of this, to step out once again in the foyer and answer any and all questions you have. The reality is, is we, we have a tremendous issue brewing. We've got growth at unprecedented numbers. We've got growth, an unprecedented amount of growth. Um, you know, my senate district, which includes Lehigh, Saratoga, Eagle Mountain, about a third of Hermon, we added close to twenty-five thousand people last year. We're going to add another twenty-five thousand people this year. So, I mean, these are very serious concerns. So I strongly encourage you to, not only tonight, but once again on Tuesday night, there'll be another meeting candidate, you've been at Legacy Center if you can attend. Vote your conscience. Ask the hard questions of each and every one of these candidates, make sure that you get to a comfort level of their representation for your needs, your concerns in this area, the principles that you espouse, and then vote your conscience for these people. Thank you so much for coming tonight, God bless you and travel safely.